Misty's here, so we can get started.
Just quite no business.
I will swap you.
Justin, will you lead us into invocation?
Yes, sir, I will. Please pray with me. Dearly Father God, we love you, we thank you for today. God, we just appreciate all that you've done. We thank you for the protection you've given us in the storm. We thank you for safety on the roads. We thank you for our road workers. We thank you for our first responders, Lord, and just the protection that you've given them. Pray that you just continue to keep your hand on them as we move forward. We ask that you be with us tonight, be with our leaders, give them wisdom as they make decisions. God, we love you, in your name we pray, amen.
Misty, you'll lead us into the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we call our meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorton.
Here.
Marty Lindenberry. John Collins.
Here.
Deena McKnight.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
Jimmy Conda.
Here.
Our city attorney and city clerk are both present. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do we need to make any changes to that? Do we have a motion?
I don't think we have a motion.
We have a motion and second to pass the agenda as mail. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from January 11th. Do we have any changes that need to be made to those? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve our meeting minutes from January 11th. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum. Would anyone like to address the council tonight? Okay, close the public forum. And go straight into our business reports. We'll start with the planning commission. Looks like Walter's not here tonight.
Keith, can I just say for them? We have rescheduled their special meeting, so their special meeting will be on the 23rd at 6:30 this month, if anybody's interested in having that. That's the zoning one with Juliette. And then their regular meeting, I think, is the 17th next Thursday.
Christine, did you say 6 o'clock or 6:30?
6:30.
Okay.
They are still working on the zoning ordinance. I have been talking to Juliette about, once we get this ordinance, and so, just so everybody's on the same page, once we get that ordinance pretty well put together, we will have some public hearings to try to get the public to come in and view that ordinance as a whole, so that we can point out what we're changing. After the public hearings, then it will come to the council for review and approval. With that, we are also talking about the need to update our future zone, future use map, our zoning map. And in that, what it will be doing is basically placing these zones throughout the city. We may be changing what zone is currently in an area. And the purpose of that is, is so that in the future, when someone comes before the planning commission, the planning commission can look at that future use map, and that will help them determine, do we want to rezone this or not because of how we had planned to zone it at a prior time? So, we currently have a future use map. It's outdated. And so, that's kind of the next step that we will be moving toward as we get this zoning ordinance put together.
All right, any questions about planning? Tracy, can you give us the court report?
We issued a whole bunch of warrants this month. I think it's because we had a little extra time to go through time pays and different things like that. And I think a lot of people got sidetracked on court dates and things because of Christmas, so we ended up, you know, it just slipped their mind, they didn't show up. Anyway, I wanted to say that I got accepted into the certified court managers program. They take 25 a year, and Arkansas is one of the few states that's certified to teach. And so, I will be going to classes. There's two classes each year, this year and then the next two years. I'm kind of excited about doing that.
Yeah, cool.
So, we're working on some new technology and stuff too, so I'm hoping we keep advancing on that part. You guys can see that our disbursements were up a little bit this month, and it looks like our citations are up about 100 from last month, or the same last January. There we go. Anyway, we got our laptop in, it's ready to be picked up. And so, next time we have the snowpocalypse, as people are calling it, we should be prepared to even be able to work from home pretty well. Be able to remote into computers here and stuff like that, so. It'll be efficient, I'm looking forward to new technology and learning new things.
Any questions for Tracy? Thank you, Tracy. Next, library report, Blair.
Okay, so when we met last month, the library had just gotten its first shipment of COVID tests in, and over the span of a couple of weeks, we gave away almost 1,000 test kits and filled in hundreds of messages and calls about them. We won't be receiving any more that I know of from the Arkansas Department of Health. And every library in Arkansas, we're all out. So, as far as I know, we won't be getting any more in anytime soon. I'd like to thank the mayor for coming in, helping us to hand those out, and the police and the fire departments. It was really helpful, we couldn't do it without them, so thank you guys so much. And to my knowledge, none of us caught COVID amazingly, like. Because of the snow last week, we had to cancel our book club meeting and the Shiloh Museum presentation that we had scheduled. So, the book club will be meeting Thursday this week. And for history programming this month, we have an exhibit curated by Tom Maringer of the Chara Post Mint. It's on the postal history of Washington County. And so, that display is up in the library, it's in the lobby, you can't miss it, I hope you come see it. It's really amazing, everything in it is from his personal collection. And so, it's really great. And tomorrow, we have tech help, we have a morning session and an afternoon session. So, if you or someone you know has, you know, computer questions, if they got a new iPad or a new phone for Christmas, or they just need help with their computer, we're here to help with that. And it's also a good time to come in and help us let you download Libby, which is the library's app for checking out eBooks and e-audio books. If you have Overdrive, Libby and Overdrive merge together, so Overdrive will be going away, and everything will be on Libby. So, now's the time to download that. This gives you access to all kinds, like thousands of eBooks and audiobooks, so, and all you have to do is download an app. But if you feel kind of like, I don't know how to do this, you can come into the library, we can walk you through it. Your login information is going to be the number on your library card, and your password is going to be your last name with the first letter capitalized. Any questions?
No questions for Blair?
All right, thank y'all.
So, there's a lot going on at the library, I can attest to that. While I was down there passing out COVID tests one afternoon, Blair and Marie were talking about, Marie is doing some sort of a cooking program, or thinking about it, putting it together. Part of that is taking, there was a recipe, Marie found a recipe in the West Fork Yearbook from 1988, '87, somewhere in the neighborhood, that used camel meat.
Oh my gosh.
Marie has found somewhere in Northwest Arkansas that sells camel meat. So, there could be some camel meat stew at the library, so.
Yeah, Marie does that series once a month. And so, we have it on our YouTube and our Facebook, she streams it. So, last month she did, I think, lemon roqueal pie, which sounds gross, but it's actually really good. She brought it into the library, so we got to sample it. So, if you're interested in any of her cooking classes, she has them online.
So, what was the roqueal?
It was basically like a lemon meringue pie. With a terrible name. It had some kind of spin on it, but she's the cook, I just eat what she makes.
So, a lot going on down there, trying to get into the library. They're doing a lot of programming. And I guess, Blair, let's shoot for, are you open this Friday?
Yes.
Okay. We'll try to shoot for Friday then, to get and ask the mayor in, since we missed last month, didn't work out for us.
So, we'll shoot it at 3 o'clock, but what I've been doing is because we haven't been live streaming it anymore, I've been editing it, so we'll shoot it on Friday, and then by Monday, I'll have it up on our Facebook page.
So, questions submitted by two?
Uh, yes.
There we go. Maybe we'll get some more, we have a couple of questions from last month that have remained unanswered, that we need to get answered. All right. Anything else for Blair? Chief Nelson.
How many test packets did we pass out the second time?
990. Oh, it's all together, 900.
I've never seen, we looked like Chick-fil-A that second time. I've never seen Goggins move so fast. I'm telling you, they wanted to pass them out and get going, and they moved, and I guess they were cold, I don't know, but that was fun to watch. We had 373 calls for serps, we took 50 reports, 104 citations with 100 warnings. Felony arrests were seven, warrants served were 54. Any questions, Warren?
'87, was that the year you graduated?
No, 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 that's, I'm not that old yet. That's back in your days, huh?
Way before that.
I graduated in '94. Or '93, or maybe '92.
It was '94.
Was it '90 what?
Did you graduate?
Was it? I think about that, it's been a while.
I remember when you graduated.
I'm just trying to remember, you know, the age between my kids and him.
Because you were working at the city in '77, right?
Yeah.
No, I was '94, and I did come swimming in your pool, we had your two sons.
I know. Man, you're old. Any other questions for the chief? All right, thanks, chief. Isaac?
I don't have just a great deal. On the sewer project part, we are kind of moved down to rehab, Boils is, we wrapped up the school, at least they've got some equipment to haul off. We did do a pre-bid meeting for trying to get the sludge removal at the sewer plant this morning. We had three contractors show up, which was great. I had a lot of good questions. We will open those bids next Thursday at 2:00, so. Hopefully, by next council meeting, we'll be awarding that contract to a contractor to do that. And I think that, I think it's got built-in 60 calendar days to get that done, 60 working days. The meters are in, we put 460 meters in, we've got 40 on the shelf for here and there, we've got some new taps over here. I randomly took 20 of those to Fayetteville, had them tested, nine of those 20 failed. One of them failed at 44% is how accurate it was, so it was way off.
Your old ones?
Yep.
I thought you meant some of them.
No, 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 lots of new ones.
Where did you put them?
We've got everything from the river this way. We kind of broke it up in cycles, so cycle one is everything on the high-pressure side, which is 71, Butterfield, all that. Cycle two is everything on this side, plus Harvest Bank and Pleasant Streets, all on the low-pressure side, so. Everything on this side's done, and we did several centennial because they're just hard to read. So. But yes, everything on this side is done. So, as soon as I can get the meter that we have installed over here at the water plant, the old water plant to upload, I'll be able to get a water loss daily for this side of town, should be. Pretty close. Me and Nick are currently going through our water agreement with Fayetteville, trying to go through it and make sure it all jives. The old one had them, they promised 800 gallons a minute, it's in that old agreement, we want to make sure that's enough for for what we grow. That's like a little over a million gallons a day, which we're not anywhere close to that, we're 200,000 a day right now, so. So, we're trying to make sure that meets our needs for the future. And I don't know if you're getting the copies of the approval letters that are coming for Homestead subdivision. ANRC sent us kind of a pre-approval thing, that they're going to start looking into that more. We got one from DEQ, that they have reviewed the plans, so that's moving forward. And for y'all that don't know, we are not doing that, we're just sponsoring it, so we're kind of the go-to for getting that Homestead tied onto our sewer line.
So, a little bit of backstory there. When we were talking about the sewer line, we also reached out to Homestead to see about them tying on to our sewer system. They're on a self-contained system that's had problems for a long time. When, and we had a meeting at the community center, all of Homestead came down and voted about whether or not they would like to tie on to West Fork. When the ARPA funds came out, I reached out to the county and asked the county if they would use some of their ARPA funds to help Homestead. And we also talked to Nick, who volunteered his time to do a rough design of Homestead, to get a cost estimate. He also reached out to the state to see if the state had some funds that they could help to get that thing changed over. So, basically, what's happened at Homestead, when it was initially put in, they borrowed money that was tied to their property taxes, okay? They formed an improvement district. There's probably very few residents in Homestead that initially bought a house in there. You know, people have moved in, different things, but they've came into this and then realized, oh, I'm kind of trapped, my sewer doesn't work. The Property Owner Association obviously doesn't have the kind of money, I mean, we're talking a couple million dollars to get tied into West Fork's system. And yet, all of these homeowners are still tied to this existing bond that was from when the subdivision first started. So, I reached out to the county and said, hey, would you guys help use some of your ARPA funds? At that time, they were mostly still saying, use them for water and sewer. The county took this up, several of the justices of peace took a different stance on this and said, well, those people, they bought into this, this is their, basically, this is their problem, we're not giving any money for this because there's other systems in the county, and we're not getting ourselves on the hook for it. My personal opinion was, well, it was the county department that approved that to go in, so the county is already kind of vested in it. Anyway, neither here nor there, but the county said, no, we're not going to give any funds for it. We initially had hoped that we could get some county funds allocated to it, and that would help get some state funds, some bigger state funds allocated to help those. I mean, one thing is to help the subdivision. Number two is to get rid of the pollution that's taking place there, so that step system sits right next to a creek that goes into the White River. And then number three is the selfish part of it, we would like sewer customers, right? But it is a big problem that needs to be solved. That homeowners association, those citizens there are not going to be able to solve it on their own. So, Nick is working pro bono at this point, I mean, obviously, he's kind of hoping he'll get some some work out of it if it progresses, if he can get some state funding for it, but.
He has submitted all the paperwork down there, so we're getting response letters back, so.
And we're not paying for any of that, but the state does require that there is a sponsor who will administer the funds if they give funds. And so, we have said, yes, we will administer those funds if you guys can come up with some. So, we're tied into it, we're not spending any money on it. But that's kind of what's going on there.
I mean, it would be nice to pick up another, well, 90 customers there, so. So, it'd be nice. That's all I got, are there any questions?
Who created McKnight with the big blue tractor with the angle blade?
What day?
Sunday.
Dante.
Whose tractor's that?
That's ours.
Where'd you have that one hid?
It's been here, we've used it the last couple of snows, so it's proven to be pretty handy.
Yeah, that angle blade, yeah.
Yeah.
The chat truck is fixed too, right?
Chat truck is fixed, we had it for this storm, so.
And so, with some help from the fire department, we're looking at getting a spray rig to pretreat. We'll see how that progresses, but Chief Meyer said he has a truck that.
I'm ready to go.
Ready to go. So.
Does spreader bed work this time?
Yes.
Where'd you use it at?
Well, I mean, we typically just hit the hills and intersections.
That was pretty slick, down that corner.
It was really slick up on the hill.
Our main focus was Dogwood and McGee and that, so, and getting people out of West Fork Acres. We did not do Mecca Street, I don't think, so.
I can attest to that.
But yeah, and we worked through the weekend, I mean, the sunshine helped, so we can start plating it off.
So, you pointed that out. Did you guys, you intentionally just ignored my street?
My street didn't get it either, so. And I got a deer full from my wife. But that's all I got.
One last thing on Isaac's report. The 40% fail rate was on, it was to the customers' good. Okay, so, the water customer was getting 60% more water than what they were paying for.
That's why that usually works.
But I just wanted to point that out, and we have had a few calls.
You don't brag about it either, they'll come change it.
We have had a few calls where people have called because their water bills went up after the fact that we changed that out.
I have a question. What about with the funds for the county? What about the green people? I mean, are they not having a feel about what's going on in the river?
I don't know if they just don't know about it, or.
Somebody needs to let them know.
I don't know. ADQ has permitted that, so I don't know the ins and outs of there's, I don't know if they're under the consent order, or if they're about to be, or what. But I know we've, well, Amanda lives up there, there's, when it rains, there's sewer running down the curves.
Oh my gosh.
So, it just can't, they've got so much infiltration.
We are not a third world country, somebody needs to do something.
They've got enough infiltration that their system can't handle, and it literally just comes up out of the ground, so. So, it needs to go away.
Yeah, well, how do we, I mean.
So, for them to hook up, we're going to have to do a bunch of repairs there too?
Well, Nick has proposed that as a turnkey, a turnkey thing. All that step system will come out. They have a septic tank that the solid settle in, and they're only pumping, they're supposed to be only pumping water up to this thing, so. The tanks will come out, all of that will come out, they'll, new sewer will be out the front, they'll run new service lines, it'll be totally redone, so. There won't be one yard in there they don't touch.
How can we help? What can we do to help this situation?
I think we're helping as much as we can.
Okay, so I mean, I'm talking about.
Can you take pictures and send them somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, what can we do?
Well, I can't think of the old gentleman's name that cracks me up.
I had to know his name.
Newberry, Jim Newberry.
I assure you, they have someone on site that is documenting.
He has a briefcase full of pictures and documents.
Is he sharing it with the right people?
Yeah.
He was part of those people, to my understanding.
Yeah, he lives there, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, he's part of the state organization.
Yes.
Ah, okay. Well, I just wondered if there's something that, you know, as city officials, is there somehow we can?
What is the answer?
Well, and I think us offering up the sponsor, you know, sponsoring it, and Nick's involved, you know, trying to get the funding through the state, because, I mean, the state has ARPA money they got to spend too, and that's an easy project, they can do it.
So, call those people, those numbers that I passed out at the last meeting?
I went here, I'll need to get that.
Okay.
I had COVID.
I basically gave out the numbers to our representatives, our state senator and state representative, and I said, I've been doing this all wrong, I gripe because people don't come to us, they go to Facebook. So, let's call our representatives and start telling them what we want. That's the way the system's supposed to work, so that's what we need, yeah.
One last thing, for everybody that don't know, the new gated rail system, railroad crossing, that's what they're doing right here at the railroad tracks.
Do you have a gate?
We'll get a crossing gate in the whole nine yards, so.
Are you going under the river with water, or what are you doing with the rail?
That is the gas company, they replace that gas.
I was hoping that'd be a new water main going under there.
I would love that.
Can we get them to do it at the same time?
I don't know what the price tag was for that board, but I bet it was high. So. Anything else for me?
Thank you.
All right. Parks report.
The Parks Committee did meet yesterday, but I wasn't able to get the minutes from that meeting into your packets this time, but we'll have some for next time. But at that meeting, we did make some decisions, especially about our 4th of July event. We set a date for that, we're going to hold it on July 1st again this year, which will be a Friday night, so it'll still be 4th of July, 4th weekend, but it'll be early. People can come to our event and then spend their weekend how they choose. Also, we are going to move forward, we're planning a full event, we're going back to serving food, bringing in the extra activities and things like that. That could change if something was to change with COVID as we get closer to the event, but but we are intending on and planning for a full event this year. We went ahead and proved the people to do our fireworks, and also talked about the musicians we'd like to have and things like that, so we're going to start reaching out and scheduling all that stuff. So, we're excited about that. We are still working on signups, those will wrap up. The deadline's a week from Friday, but I'll probably have to extend it a little bit, but I have to have all that done by March 2nd, I believe, to turn it into the league, so. Working on that, we were doing some field improvements where we could, but of course, that's gotten slowed down a lot the last week or so. And then, we did get our mini-split heating and cooling units installed in the concession stand building today, as a matter of fact. They finished up, so we'll be able to heat the concession stand area, our utility closets that house most of our water lines and stuff, as well as our umpire room and both bathrooms. We're in the process of putting a ceiling in the bathrooms, because they don't currently have a ceiling, and then we're going to add some insulation and stuff, so it's going, we should be in the next week or so done with all that and be able to maintain heat and air in there as well. That'll be nice, not just for the people that are using the building, but for us to be able to keep it open to your ground and be able to not have to shut it down for winter and things like that, so. And that's pretty much all I've got.
Any questions for Chad? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Myers?
Sounded like I fared pretty well, Dante and Sheldon had. Sounded like I fared pretty well, Dante and Sheldon had to come to our parking lot and street twice, so. Big help, cause that helps us get the trucks in and out so much easier and safer, so I thank them for doing that. Um, we did have one of our firefighters die, uh, Troy Preston died. Huge asset to us, I hate, you know, to lose anybody, but funeral for that would be Friday at eleven, um, of course, anybody that knew him wants to go, welcome. Um, we ended up with quite a few calls coming over there, eighty-seven, which is more than we had even any, any month last year. And even the last week of January, we had, just for those two days, we had seventeen calls, just for that weekend, way out of norm. And I will, I will help Blair with the, having a COVID test, and I'm glad she's not getting any more of them, that was a lot of work. Um, I told you last month, we're getting, uh, that the county decided they would buy their packs. They're having a meeting this next Tuesday on what they're gonna do, what packs they're gonna go with. There is gonna be some costs associated in the long run with it, cause we'll have to buy the extra bottles for the, for their packs. Um, don't know exactly till after Tuesday what that's gonna be, um, but, and I, for some reason, the county set a stipulation that they had to have the money spent by this year, so they're trying to get a meeting, get stuff ordered, before any more price increases that we have, so. I should know more next month on, on kind of roughly what it would cost us, that we gotta spend, so. Radio system still, still on track for spring twenty twenty-three, hope it goes that good. Other than that, I think that's all we got.
Any questions for Chief Myers?
Come on, you have your own questions.
Thank you, sir.
Consider yourself lucky.
Christie. Well, it's January, so I don't have any department heads to pick on, so, um, obviously, the finances look good for one month. Um, we did, city sales tax did go up eight percent from this time last year, um, and county up, uh, point one percent, so. That's about all on finances.
Boy.
I've been really busy, did not have more than that to report, but that's really about all I have to report, so if there's any questions on that, I can answer it. Um, otherwise, the one thing that Amanda and I have been pretty busy with right now is we have changed to our next bill, um, automatic pay system. So if you call the city, you'll notice that the phone lines are a little bit different, you have an option to just immediately go to the bill pay system and do that. Um, it's got a lot of options, we've had a lot of success with it, we've had, we've only had two people, um, that have had difficulty setting anything up, and we were able to walk them through it. Um, it's definitely been a learning process for us on the posting end of things, but it, within another month, we'll, we'll have that down, so. Uh, I think it's been a big ac, asset and will continue to be for the water department. Um, the only other update I have is ARPA, um. They did, and I think I might have touched on this before, but they did change the rules to ARPA about what you could spend money on. Um, and they've basically made it where you can claim up to ten million, which we don't have that much money, but, if you had gotten that much money, you could claim that much in lost revenue, whether you can show that you actually have ro, lost revenue of that amount or not. Which basically mean that that can go for any general use within the city. That's a very broad explanation of something that we have to document very well, but, um, it does open up the possibilities of spending that money a little bit differently than we originally thought, um, and just, we're gonna have to start planning, uh, cause we know we're gonna get some more in July, so we need to start thinking ahead and planning for what our thoughts are for that. And they have a training, I'm doing a training Zoom tomorrow for the first recording that starts in April on that, so. The Treasury's opened up their reporting portal, and we have to start that in April, and do that twice a year. Any questions?
Is everyone on the council, has everyone on the council signed up for the text alerts?
Emergency alerts, so if we have, um, water outages that are, are gonna cover a large area.
I get them through an email, is that what you mean?
They'll come through email or text, if you sign up that way.
That's when a water outage is, or something, I get that.
We put that system into place, we talked about that, uh.
Last year when we had, like, the zero degree weather for three days and had major water outages on this side of town and stuff.
So we started looking into it, we, we got the system, what kind of sign-up rate have we had, you don't know?
No.
You should know that.
Sprung that one on me, I don't know.
But we did, we did send out notifications to sign up for it, I was just wondering if the council was signed up, uh, so that they were aware of those. We still need to sit down and, and discuss a little bit further how we're gonna use that. Um, we, we don't want it to be something that we're just sending out alerts constantly, but right now, we've been using them for, there's a water outage here, or, uh.
We had, I, I'm pretty sure we put when, uh, Mecca Street was gonna be closed, I think we've put one out for that, cause we knew ahead of time that it was gonna close for a day. If we, I mean, if we have a water outage that's gonna be off for thirty minutes to an hour, or that's what we think it's gonna be out, and it's ten houses, we're not putting it out for that, but if we think.
And you had a boil order or something more time, I think.
We haven't had any boil orders.
Well, I thought one from somewhere.
But that's probably, may have been Washington Water, they usually have to put out quite a few, but, but that, it's an option to use it if we ever have that for that, but it's, it's a good resource to have, we're trying not to overuse it, um, but it's, it's a really good resource to have when we do have emergencies and need to try to get the word out to people.
It's more direct than using a Facebook or, or even email that, you know, some people may not check their email constantly, so you can get the text message, maybe, maybe even a phone call, I don't know.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So it, it really opens up how we can directly reach out and let people know.
And that, and if you're not signed up for it, you can just go to the water website, and there's a place right there that says sign up for alerts, so that's how you get signed up for it.
It's easy.
Yeah.
It's really easy.
Anything else for Christie? Okay. All right, in new business, we have a memorandum of agreement with the Greenland Police Department. Do we have any questions concerning that?
Same as last time, isn't it?
Well.
I mean, sort of, does it change the job?
This was passed in two thousand and twenty.
Okay.
At that time, we were to take call for Greenland five days a week, they were to take it two days a week. Ken Eagle stepped up and said he wanted all the Greenland call. After Ken Eagles retired, for some reason, that all disappeared, the guys didn't remember something. So for about a year and a half, we've taken all their calls.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week, so I got ahold of Rick and said, hey, this, this, somehow this is not working, it's not, it's not what we agreed to. He said, I don't remember what we agreed to, let me look at it, I'll get back with you. So about two months went by, he called me and said, I wanna meet with you, let's, let's meet about this, I said, okay. And he said, yeah, you're right, I don't know how that happened, but I wanna know if you'll cover it six days a week instead of five, and we'll pay you more money. So they offered to pay us an additional amount of money for the extra day, which I agreed to, if they wanted to do that, so that's what the changes. A little bit more money, but we're gonna cover it six instead of seven. It basically leaves them on call one night a week.
Yeah.
And we picked the Wednesday, cause Wednesday is a, is a switch between our officers, each officer works alternating Wednesdays. We still keep it for the weekend, once the business and they have, would have the most calls, but that way, my officers each get a night off and don't have to take it. So that's basically what this is. And the sixty-three fifty is based on call percentages, is how they did that originally. How many we get called out based on how much they get called out, and we get called out on a lot more, we get a lot more calls in Greenland, so. That's how they come up with sixty-three dollar fifty cents per shift.
So you're happy with this?
Yeah, of course, I mean, we're always.
Okay, just making sure.
We've been doing it anyway, so we might as well get the money from it, absolutely.
But anything major, they have to call out someone too, don't they, whoever's on call?
No.
So our guys, they're alone, if there's a big deal going on?
If there, well, if there's a big deal, we're all gonna go be called out, Washington County, all, if it's a big enough deal, we all, that's just the nature of it.
Right.
That would be from police chiefs on down, but usually, if it's something in Greenland, like a domestic or something, we won't call Greenland out, county will back us up, something like that.
Right, okay.
Any questions about that? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pass this.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no, that motion carries. Other business, do we have any other business?
The only thing I thought was, and we don't have to address it now, but maybe in your thing on Friday, is you explain all the hard work that our city employees did do during the snow to clear the roads, till the people realized that they weren't doing nothing. Because I'm sure they were out hardworking quite a bit, as you mentioned, even on the weekends, y'all were working very hard. And so on Facebook, some people think that nothing was done, and I know that's not true, so maybe if there was an explanation of what we do, the equipment that we have, and why we do the amount that we do, whatever, just an explanation, because.
Can we probably ask you what those lazy guys were doing? And then you can clarify, cause that's basically what they're saying, people just don't understand.
They're still not gonna get it, so.
But I don't think if we discuss it in this forum, most of those people aren't gonna watch this recording, but if you put it on your Facebook questions that you answer, maybe some of those people will see that, and they'll realize the hard work that was being done.
Yeah.
And the limitations to what we can do.
Yes.
I think that's a good idea, and I've said it before, I'll say it again, we don't have everybody here, but this city is blessed, um, it doesn't matter which department we pick out, or which employee we pick. For the size of city we have, um, and I've told all of these, uh, department heads this, uh, personally. This group could go somewhere else. Uh, they're, they're qualified, um, their dedication to this city is unparalleled, it's unmatched, um, with any city around here, and it just amazes me when I, when I see them doing things, when I hear about things they're doing, I brought up before our financial director down at the park pulling weeds. Uh, I mean, there's, there's things that go on, I've seen Isaac, uh, at eight o'clock at night volunteering to do work that he could have just as easily put off till the next day and got paid for. Uh, I mean, the city is, and that's why it aggravates me so badly to see that stuff on Facebook, when, when you know what, um, our group is doing for the city, that's above and beyond what this city pays them for, it's just.
I think the ones that mostly are complaining are newbies, they just don't know.
I think it's, yeah, they just don't think about it.
City by everybody that loves it, so.
But thank you for all you all did in every department during that weather all the time, so.
Um, anything else?
I did have a question, Mr. Mayor. Um, last month, you brought up a possibility that somebody was wanting to build a housing structure that was more than two stories tall. Um, and my question then, and, and continues to be is, is the fire department equipped currently to fight a fire at that three, four level building? And if not, what it would cost to be equipped to do that? And that may be something that could be brought next city council meeting, how much that apparatus would cost.
Not even really just.
A general ballpark.
The water infrastructure, trying to fight a fire their size, you know, things like that you don't think about, so. It's a lot more goes to it than just me, but yes, I'll be more than happy to.
So it, it's a good question, uh, and it's, it's a question that, that has to be, that's gonna have to be discussed. Um, and, and the way I have tried to come at, at that question, uh, this isn't the first time it's been brought up, but Christie and I started talking a year and a half, two years ago, um, about the lag in, uh, property taxes, so. So something gets built now, it's a year before we start getting property taxes from them, and so there's lags that the city is gonna face. Uh, but I try to approach it with, with the mindset of, just because we don't have the resources currently, do we, do we say we don't want that stuff, or do we start looking for routes to, to get the resources we need? And it's, it's fire department, absolutely, uh, and, and I think you're aware that if Harps were to catch fire, we're not in the best shape to, to go fight a Harps fire. But it's one Harps in the city, right, so. Uh, but whether it's the fire department, the police department, the finance department, the court, the library, the parks, or public works, we have issues within the city, uh, when it comes to, uh, Isaac just talked about, uh, looking at our, um, memorandum with the city of Fayetteville about how much water they are required to provide us. So, uh, this is, this is a concern, we've got one line coming into town, um, on that line, it goes up, uh, Wall and Mountain. Um, so as we're pulling water, water isn't going up Wall and Mountain, I mean, there, there's issues there. So one of the things we've, we've been discussing is, is some redundancy, uh, with the water system, if, if we get some of these, is there a way that we can find another route for water to come in that's maybe closer to one of these developments, and we can get some developer help to pay for these and get a redundancy in our water system, which then again goes to the fire department, so. It's, it's not just one piece, um, it, the, the whole puzzle is moving together. And, and with the potential growth, uh, and I'll, I'll say it's not even potential at this point, but with the growth that's coming, we have several obstacles in front of us that we're gonna have to deal with in the next, I don't know, I'd say four to five years. Uh, but it's, it's one of those things, we either, we curl up in a cocu, cocoon and, and we just let it pass us by, or we get out in front of it and start trying to plan for these things, so yeah, I definitely think, uh, we.
We've already done the first one too long, that's our problem, man.
That's right.
So, so yeah, um, we, we know, Jimmy, that yes, uh, in order to do those things, we're definitely gonna have to bump some resources in the fire department, uh, in some of the other departments, and, and that's my approach to it, is what do we need, what's it gonna cost, how do we get that money, can we get somebody else to, to give us some of that money, so, um, definitely things to consider.
Well, we definitely don't want to turn down the growth, I mean, it's, it's time. It is time, it's here, whether we like it or not, it's here, and I, I think that we have to prepare, if we prepare ahead, then we're gonna come out okay.
That's right.
And that's, that's all I'm looking at, is saying, then let's, let's come up with a list of different things for each department that we need to be mindful of going forward.
Um, and, and I, I think, I think I've said it in front of this group, I know I've said it in front of the planning. But a lot of the growth is probably not gonna be in the West Fork that we currently know. So, the downtown area, um, you know, we're, we're kind of, we're snuggled in between two mountains, but there's a lot of uh, property along Interstate forty-nine that is probably gonna be developed, uh, there's developers talking to Greenland, developers talking to us, but a lot of that talk is, is concerned with that corridor surrounding Interstate forty-nine, and in my opinion, if it's gonna grow there, we need to be of a mindset that we would like to, to annex that growth. So, um, I think a lot of people, uh, especially, and I know that's not where you were going with that, Jimmy, but a, a lot of the talk about the two-story and, and bigger is, well, what's that gonna do to our current, the look of our current town, whose, whose house is no longer gonna have a view because it has a three-story whatever in front of it, and I don't think that's the case, I think that stuff is gonna grow out in different areas, and it's not gonna be right here where.
There's no room.
That, that's right.
We don't have anything downtown that we can do much with, so it's gonna have to be out.
Right, and so.
Move it three or four stories a month, so you can't see.
We, we are looking, part of the things that we're looking at in our zoning code, just to give everybody kind of an update on that, is this building that we're currently in could not be built in West Fork right now. On this lot size, it could not be built, the building across the street couldn't be built. Uh, somebody pointed out that there's a three-story hotel over there on the wall that used to stand in West Fork. So we've, we've had bigger than two-story before. but our current zoning code really limits a lot of where some of the design is going. And whether, whether we like that design or not, obviously somebody does, because some of those buildings that are in Fayetteville that I thought, man, who in the world would wanna live in that? They're full. They're selling for, for good money, right?
They're arguing extremely good money.
So whether, you know, a small group says, no, I want, you know, single-family ranch-style houses spread out, that's, that's great, but in West Fork, we don't have a lot of room for single-family ranch-style houses. And I made the comment the other night that one of the, one of the key terms used in, what do you like about West Fork? Okay, so when we asked that question, one of the responses is the small-town community feel. Don't wanna lose that small-town community feel. And I'm arguing that this single-family ranch-style living has already pulled that feel away. That we need some density in this town to get people back together. Because currently, we go home and we stay there, right? And we, we have a public meeting and we have one visitor. Thank you, Frank. So I am making the argument that if, if we could get a little bit more density in town in certain areas, maybe we can get some more community feel that, that we're kind of, you know, we're moving away from a little bit. So anyway, it's, it's all, a, a lot of it is planning, a lot of it's gonna be planning for, we're gonna plan for it, nothing's gonna come of it, but we still need to get a plan in place, and, and that's what we're trying to do with, with that zoning ordinance. Good question, though. Anything else? So while we're in other business, I wanna make the council aware. I'm not sure if you guys have received an email or not from an attorney out of, I believe, Little Rock. Is that right?
No, he's Fayetteville.
Is he Fayetteville?
Yes, sir.
So I directed several of the department heads to pull together our ordinances that were being violated with a business on one-seventh Main Street. And it was a pretty comprehensive list of ordinances that are in violation there. So we sent that out as we do anytime that we, we have violations. That's the way, that's the way we respond, is we send a, a letter saying, hey, this is where you're out of compliance, you need to get yourself in compliance, you have thirty days, dot, 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 dot. So we sent that out at the end of January, right around the last day of January. We received a response today from the person's attorney stating, you know, the reasons that were wrong and being unreasonable, and Tom is, is involved now. You know, we hoped by sending out a letter, we could get some changes to the property. But instead, we've got a response from an attorney that's wanting freedom of information requests about what, what the city has done, how we've corresponded. They want our emails and, and whatnot, pretty typical stuff, but so Penny Hardwoods is, is a business operating in West Fork that they're out of compliance with several of the codes. This isn't the first time that we've, we've reached out to them. It's the first time since they've moved locations, but just so everyone is aware, we are we are trying to enforce the black and white of our code. And, and people, I'm telling you, we, we've seen it in, in here in some of our conditional use permit meetings. No one likes the good old boy system until the good old boy system is working in their favor. But as soon as we start going to the code, they, they really would like to go back to a good old boy system of how things operate. We, we fought two weeks ago with another developer about the code. But my stance on this is that whether I like it or not, if it's in the code, that's where we need to be. And if we don't like that code, we need to get it changed. And there's a lot of things in the zoning code I don't like, and for two years, we've been trying to get it changed. So it's, it's a slow process. The ship's big and it moves slow sometimes, but anyway, I won't say anything more, but if, if the council is, is reached out to, just wanted you guys to be aware that we did send out a large letter of, of, of issues, and, and now it's, it's gonna, you know, Tom's gonna get involved and we'll go, go that route, so.
I wanna say thank you. It certainly needed to be done.
Yeah. There's plenty of violations there.
Yes.
So that's all I had for other business. Mayor's comments. I don't really have anything this month.
You've used up your time. And then some. You're in the next month.
There's just so much going on. I want you guys to, we only get together once a month. I wanna make sure I get everything out. Did I miss anything, Chad?
No.
Okay. So before we adjourn, Tom, do, who, do you need to talk to anybody in particular concerning this, as far as department heads or...
Everybody, sorry, Christie, everybody give your letter, a copy of it at least, to Christie, and I'm gonna work with her. And, because some of them may be, they may all look alike, but they may be different. And then when you're asked to get documents, please feel free to tell me how that's not right, and it shouldn't be that way, and this is wrong, you shouldn't have stopped and do this, and you're busy and all that, because I'm happy to hear it, I really am. I'll still make you do it all, but I'm interested, you know, because you're right.
Do you need to meet with anybody after this meeting?
I'm happy to answer any questions, but, I think it's all his fault, right?
Absolutely.
I was not pointing at you.
He wears the big hat in town.
Yeah, yeah. So did, did all of the department heads that were involved get a letter, get an email? Jude Nelson, did you get one?
So much I can know, so much I can...
Okay. You didn't get one, Isaac? So...
I don't think I did.
Just Chief Myers, myself, and Christie, and Anne? Okay.
I'll ask him to communicate just with me.
Yes.
I'll coordinate that, so y'all don't have to respond to him. We'll, we'll take your response.
I might get a motion.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, guys.